Six o'clock. So we will begin our planning commission meeting for March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Welcome everyone. Good evening and on behalf of the City of Independence, we welcome you to this virtual planning commission meeting. For the convenience of those participating in tonight's meeting, I'd like to remind all in attendance, and that includes commissioners and the public, to please mute yourself when you are not speaking to prevent distraction and unwanted disruptions. Staff will be enforcing this and monitoring those in attendance for questions during public hearings. During the public hearing portions of the meeting, staff will call those who have requested to speak in the order that they signed up. Following that, anyone else who wishes to speak will be recognized. For those who wish to speak tonight, please remember to address all comments and questions to the chair and keep your comments brief and on point. If you agree with a previous comment, just simply indicate that you agree. To expedite tonight's meeting, I will ask all of those who wish to testify or believe that they might like to testify or speak to be pleased sworn in. So if you will all unmute, turn your picture on if possible. And then raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission. If so, please answer I do, or if you're unmuted. Wait.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Okay, before we begin with the cases, if you'll all unmute and start. Perfect, thank you. Um, will the city please call roll call?
Commissioner Drea.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner Weir.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
And Chairman McLean.
Here. Thank you.
What?
Oh.
Commissioner Michelle, I think you missed me, but I'm here.
Oh, you're here? Okay. All right.
No worries.
Sorry, I didn't catch that either. Um, if you have an agenda in front of you, um, I just kind of want to go over a few little notes. Number one and number two are consent agenda, so there'll be one vote. Um, number three, capital improvements, we are, um, that will be moved to the March twenty-third meeting, so we won't be doing that, hearing that tonight. And that's all for me. So we will begin with case number one and two. Case number two, one dash three, two, zero dash zero, one. Final Platt Atlas Ridge lots one through five, northwest corner, South Hocker Street and East C Avenue. Dan Wilson, case two, one dash three, two dash zero, one, Final Platt Tybrook Estates. P U D, P U D Phase one A, eight forty North Powell Road, Pollard, Orff and Associates. So we will begin with that. Staff, will you give us a report?
There, there's no report. These are a consent item.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry.
By the way, I, by the way, I think that Tybrook Estates one is oh, two, not oh, one.
It is. Did I say oh, one? I'm corrected. Case one dash three, two, zero dash zero, two, Final Platt Tybrook Estates. Okay.
So are we skipping Atlas Ridge?
There one, there, it's one vote.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah, it's a consent agenda.
Okay.
So is there any discussion on this or take a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Joe. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Joe. Do you have a second?
A second.
Mr. Wiley, seconded. Okay, case is number two, one dash three, two, zero dash zero, one, Final Platt Atlas Ridge. In case twenty-one dash three, two, zero dash zero, two, have a motion and a second. Will you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Drea.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle.
Yes.
Commissioner Weir.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Did you get Commissioner Michelle in there?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Next case on your agenda is number four, case twenty-one dash one hundred dash zero, three. Rezoning of one, two, eight, one, six, East Forty-seventh Street South. Aaron Ford requested the property located at twelve eighteen six, eight sixteen, East Forty-seventh Street be rezoned from C one, Neighborhood Commercial to R twelve to Family Residential. So city, would you give us three, four, please?
Okay, um, Aaron Ford requests to rezone the property located, excuse me, at one, two, eight, one, six, East Forty-seventh Street South from C one Neighborhood Commercial to R twelve to Family Residential. You can see from the vicinity map, it's at that northeast corner of, um, uh, Forty-seventh and North Fleet, basically wrapping around, um, a property couple, excuse me, a couple of properties. Choking on a peanut, I had earlier. Um, uh, couple of properties that are at the corner of that intersection. The applicant and owner, Aaron Ford, intends to split a one point six five acre L-shaped property containing a single-family house and a large backyard into two lots. He wants to fix the property's legal non-conforming status, making the houses residential use conform on its new lot. Therefore, he wants to create a marketable, um, duplex or single-family property with the remainder of the tract. Therefore, he is requesting to rezone the tract from C one Neighborhood Commercial to R twelve to Family Residential. This is in accordance, in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. Um, lot two of Twy House Edition will be platted into a nineteen thousand, six hundred fifty square foot lot two B containing the existing house, uh, which, um, abuts East Forty-seventh Street. And then lot two A will be that remainder to the north, the fifty-two thousand nine hundred. Um, the, uh, but, um, or it is abutted by a North Fleet to the west. Uh, therefore, this lot, lot A will continue, will also continue to have the lease area in the northeast corner of the property that currently contains, um, a cell tower and its associated ground equipment and screening that it has around it. If zone, um, R twelve, um, this lot could be the site of a short street and cul-de-sac with single-family homes or duplexes arranged around them. So I'll go through our, our PowerPoint here. So the zoning i- is this pink area here, and you can see, um, the residential to the south with the dots, that's Voorhees Vale. And then you can see the, uh, single-family located to the west, and then this property wraps around uh, the two properties, uh, small properties located at the corner of the intersection there. So the cooperate's a plan, envisions this area uh, to be residential and doesn't event, uh, does not envision commercial development in this vicinity. Or any additional, anyway. And so here's the existing lot. You can see the houses upfront aligned with, um, the other structures along Forty-seventh Street. And then you can see, uh, the large remainder that is at the rear. Um, this is, uh, the notification map for their, uh, rezoning. Um, and a list of all the, uh, neighboring addresses off to the left there. This is from standing right of Forty-seventh Street, looking north toward the front door of the house. And of course, you can see the cell tower that's off in the, off to the north there. Uh, this is the baseball that lies to the east, existing commercial use. And then this is a little commercial use that's down toward the intersection, um, as well as the, uh, transformer that's right there at the intersection. Um, this is Voorhees Vale, looking across Forty-seventh Street to the south. And this is looking into the north part of the property from, um, North Fleet, looking east. And you can see the tower at the rear of the property, or actually the northeast corner of the property. And this is just turned around the other direction, looking at the residential neighborhood that lies to the west. So that concludes my, um, my, um, presentation. Staff recommends approval of this zoning request, and I'm ready to take any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of, um, staff before we have the applicant come forward?
Yeah, Brian, this is Joe. Um, so once this is own, this is zoned residential, uh, that house, I think it seems like it used to be a pest control or something like that, a business in there. So once it's zoned residential, uh, can he just go through this process again and turn that house back into?
Are you, Mr.?
It was approved?
Um, well, well, not, well, I mean, you'd have to rezone the property again, but the, but the intention of, of the downzoning was to, you know, um, create that, create that as a legal conforming residential lot and also create, um, potential, uh, residential use to the north as well.
Now, I have one other question. Is there, is there a setback from that tower that these duplexes would have to be? Are, are we?
I don't, we don't have a fall zone in our code for cell towers. It, the sub tower setback is basically related to property lines, I believe, correct? I believe, so. But I, I don't think we have a fall zone in our code.
I just have one question, um, as it relates to, uh, just for, just for clarification, in an R twelve zoning, uh, the cell tower on that property isn't allowed, isn't allowed use, something that's, that can be done?
I believe it's, I believe it, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the state has made it to where you can pretty much put a cell tower anywhere they want.
Union residential and schools.
Yeah.
And hospitals.
Mm-hmm.
Don't get me started. Any other questions of city before we bring the applicant forward? Okay, is, um, Mr. Ford available?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Will you please state your name and your address for us, and then give us any information you would like for us to have?
Uh, my name's Aaron Ford. Um, the property address, one, two, eight, one, six, East Forty-seventh Street. Um, I don't have much to add. I think, uh, Brian did well encompass, encompassing what the intended use is, the house and, in my view, was built as an actual house, not a commercial building, so, um, taking it back to its, its intended use, I believe, and, uh, um, yeah, so just the potential for duplexes. We, uh, don't know how that's going to work out as far as how quickly it may happen, but that's, uh, that's the goal. So I think we've got it, everything I need to say.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Um, staff, is there anyone who is, would like to speak for this case?
Did you hear?
No.
Are you able to hear us?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, no, sorry.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak against this case? Okay, so there is nobody here to talk for or against the case, correct? Okay. Um, then we will close the public hearing. Does anybody else have any more questions? Of, uh, city or of Aaron before we proceed with the motion?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, this is Joe, and I have a question for Mr. Ford.
What, what, you, you gave your address, but that address is, uh, do you live in that house that's we're looking at here?
No, I did not understand the personal address part of the question. My personal address is, uh, one, four, two, six Highway TT in Bates City, Missouri, Alba Oak Grove.
Thank you.
Did you recently just acquire this property?
Uh, yeah, I think it's been, uh, maybe close to a year ago now. I, I don't, maybe it was, uh, June of, uh, last year, but yes, it's been recent.
Thank you.
Any other question? Go ahead.
I have one, Madam Chair. Um, so, uh, yeah, I think everybody on the commission probably was thinking you were the owner occupied, owner occupier of that, that, that home. So do you currently have rental tenants in that, in that home?
Yeah, this was re-renovated and is rented, so I may have jumped the gun.
Thank you.
I'm sure you're taking into consideration, you know, how you're going to build around that beautiful cell tower in parking, um, in, in the odd space. I think it's a great use of it, though.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This appears to be rather straightforward and appears to be the, probably the highest and best use of the parcel. Therefore, if there's no opposition, I'll make a motion for approval on the matter of case number twenty-one dash one, zero, zero, dash zero, three. Rezoning at one, two, eight, one, six, East Forty-second, Seventh Street South. Uh, and Mr. Ford's request to rezone the property from C one Neighborhood Commercial to R twelve to Family Residential.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Virginia. Okay, city, we're ready for call.
Commissioner Drea.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle.
Yes.
Commissioner Weir.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case two, one dash one hundred dash zero, three, rezoning for twelve, eight, sixteen, East Forty-seventh Street South has passed. Congratulations, Mr. Ford, and good luck.
Thank you.
Our next case, geez, we're on two pages. This is, you know, kind of exciting. Case two, one dash four hundred dash zero, one, Home Business Permit, seventeen, two, two, nine, East Fortieth Street South. Vanessa Kramer requests approval of a home business permit for childcare.
Yes, the applicant Vanessa Kramer intends to operate in-home daycare from her residence at one, seven, two, two, nine, East Fortieth Street. She can see from the vicinity map here, the site is on the western end of the East Fortieth Street cul-de-sac, and it's west of Coventry Avenue and south of Thirty-Ninth Street. This is the zoning map for the, uh, location. Uh, shows the, uh, sort of a rec, uh, polygon there, uh, there in the middle of the completely residential area. Uh, there's commercial off to the, uh, east of, and, uh, multifamily there as well. Um, whoops. Okay, this is an aerial photograph of the site. You can see her property there in the red circle. Um, as you, you can see just from this aerial, that all the, uh, surrounding homes are single-family residential structures and a pretty, uh, pretty good neighborhood, well-established. The applicant has provided this floor plan showing the, uh, the interior of the house and how the rooms will be used, and also the driveway in the front of the house, and then also her, uh, play area in the backyard, which is, uh, uh, quite considerable, quite large. Okay, um, here we're looking west in front of the applicant's house. This is taken from the end of the cul-de-sac. She can see the house has a double-wide driveway for her customers. And, uh, you can also see the fence line on the sides of the house there, that it, that it closes the rear yard. This is the house that, uh, is adjoining this property to the north or northwest. Uh, a single-family house, again, this is also taken from the cul-de-sacs. And then, then there's two more houses here that are also on this cul-de-sac. Two more single-family homes. And then this is, we're in the middle of the cul-de-sac, looking, uh, east down Fortieth Street. Um, at Coventry is at the end of the drive there, is the T's out in the Coventry. And this is the, uh, house that's immediately east, southeast, I guess, of the applicant's property. Another single-family home. Yeah, staff does recommend approval of this, uh, home daycare, uh, with the following conditions. The business shall only, shall operate only between the hours of seven AM and six PM, Monday through Friday. The maximum number of non-related children in care shall, is limited to not more than ten and restricted to the number and age as approved by the state of Missouri and the city, and then maintain all required licenses. And I believe the applicant is here to, uh, answer any questions and make a presentation.
Perfect.
Ms., Ms. Kramer, are you here?
I am.
Could you go ahead and identify yourself and give your, give your address, please?
Yes, my name is Vanessa Kramer, and my address is one, seven, two, two, nine, East Fortieth Street South, Independence, Missouri, six, four, oh, five, uh, or five, five, sorry.
Thank you. No, go ahead, Stuart.
Well, I was just gonna say, if you could give us a brief presentation as well.
Okay, um, I've been in childcare, uh, pretty much since I was fifteen years old. Um, I'm now thirty-two, so I have been in childcare for a very long time. And, um, it's been a dream of mine to run my own daycare, just so I can take the parts of the daycares that I used to work at, the better parts, and turn it into my own daycare. Um, I just wanted to read the philosophy, the philosophy part of my handbook. Um, it says, "As a mother, I know how important it is to find someone you can trust with your child. One of the hardest things for a parent is to leave their child to someone else, and it is my mission to make you and your child feel like your family. I want to open my home up to you as if it's a second home for you. The thing that makes in-home daycare stick out from childcare facilities is the one-on-one attention and affection your child gets. But I also know that education and development is just as important. I will create a perfect balance of school-like curriculum with at-home nurturing." That's all.
Handbook, that's pretty special. Only children can get the handbook. Um, does, does anybody have any questions of Vanessa?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Joe again.
Yeah.
Vanessa, do you have, do you have children of your own at, at this age?
I do. Um, I have a soon-to-be five-year-old who is at home with me every day. And I have an eight-year-old that was, uh, distant learning from home, but is now in school in person.
Stuart, is, is the daycare, daycare, is the daycare still, does the signage apply to all home businesses that there's no, no, uh, advertising in the yard or house?
That's correct.
You're aware of that, Vanessa?
Yes, there's no advertising or signs.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, also, Stuart, would you mind explaining just for me one more time, I mean, anyone who's, um, in the public domain, is kind of why there's a difference between having four kids in the house and ten? And why, you know, what is, just kind of go over that real quick.
Okay, the, uh, the way we, our city code is written for zoning purposes that relates to childcare is, uh, we used to follow the state regulations that said that the state did not, in, did not regulate any childcare that had four or less non-related children. Uh, we do require those businesses to get licenses, but they're not reviewed by the planning commission. From five to ten non-related children, they're required to go through the planning commission and get their home business, and they're also required to get inspections by the state and by the city. And then from ten or more non-related, it's really a, uh, more than ten non-related, it's more of a commercial enterprise.
Thank you.
So, uh, yes.
I think that, that's helpful. It's helpful for me to keep that in mind as well. So Vanessa, we appreciate you going the extra mile. Does anybody else have any questions, uh, city or Vanessa?
Um, I just came to speak for Vanessa.
Okay.
Um.
Is that okay, city? Are you ready for this?
Sure, uh, have you been sworn in, ma'am, and do you identify yourself?
I did swear in. Um, my name is Jennifer Clark. I live at eighteen, eight, zero, four, Handthorn Drive.
Thank you.
Um, really, it came down to the policy. Now, I don't know the status of Vanessa's location at the, at this moment. Um, but I do have a friend that had lost their Um, but I do have a friend that had lost their daycare because of the radius requirement, and somebody like a neighbor was upset, and I just want to speak on behalf of that. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, okay, um, here, you can see me. Maybe, I don't know, um. So, as a parent, I have a, uh, a kid with special needs, and last year we found out that he would no longer be able to stay at his private, um, preschool because of he wasn't meeting their requirements. Um, really, in-home daycares are our only option, other than publics, like, public um, schools with the district. Um, currently, we lost one of the daycares in our neighborhood um, due to one neighbor not wanting this person to have a business. Um, and that's where we would have had a backup plan, um, since they closed. Um, and my son no longer could go to private preschool, uh, he, um, sorry.
Okay.
Um, in her, they, they just offered, in-home op, in-home, uh, daycares offer the best solution for care for our needs, however, um, when we were kicked out of a large private preschool last spring, we were not able to find home daycare for five months. Um, and knowing that home daycares are getting cut off by the planning commission because of a neighbor not wanting kids in the backyard, um, really has created some daycare deserts for parents and, um, residents with children. Vanessa, um, Wally's been going there, um, and so she has created the home that she says she has. It's a very loving home for him, and he's thriving there, and he's able to meet his needs. And we were lucky to find her after five months, because we had him home with us, working from home through COVID, unable to find absolutely anyone to watch him. So, that is what I have to say. Um, I hope maybe this can make you rethink that requirement um, for daycares specifically for in-home businesses.
Thank you, I appreciate your voice so much, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this case?
Uh, hi, yes, um, I have not been sworn in, my name is Jacob Queener.
Okay, let me swear you in really quick.
Sure.
Um, raise your right hand.
Uh, I don't have my camera on, but believe me, it's raised.
Thank you. Um, do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, if you'll state your name and your address, where you live.
My name is Jacob Queener. Uh, I reside at one three one four West Twenty-seventh Street.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, to speak in support of Vanessa. Um, my son Ellison, uh, just turned two and just started going there. He had been, um, for the first two years of his life staying with my, uh, my mom during the day, they decided to snowbird down to Florida, and so it was a really kind of a tough thing to, um, to leave him with somebody who wasn't family. Um, and Vanessa had worked for me, uh, several years prior. Um, she left uh, working me to, uh, for me to start this, uh, this business of hers, and I was very supportive of that. And as soon as we, uh, she was literally the first person I thought of. Um, as soon as we, we knew we were going to transition to, to, to a daycare for our son, um, I find her to be just a person of, of outstanding, high character, of, um, great attention to detail, both when she was working for me and now obviously, um, in, in, uh, being a, an owner of a childcare business. So, I just think she's great. Um, it's a really, it's really great to have somebody that, that we trust with our kid, um, that we know is gonna be uh, treated well and with love and, and kindness. And, uh, we're just always very, very confident that he's going to get that with Vanessa.
Thank you, very high praise. Anyone else to speak for this case? Is there anyone, whoops?
I will.
Have you been sworn in?
I have, I was sworn in, and I turned off my camera so I could just listen.
Perfect, get your name and your address.
My name is Shil, my name is Shiloh Ray, and, uh, we live in Blue Springs at two five one seven Northwest Kimlaw Place.
Oh.
And, um, we have, uh, been friends with the Kramers for a while, and, um, we definitely, uh, think that Vanessa has, uh, very high standards. Um, she loves our children even when, uh, we've all gotten together in other times, but, um, our daughter, uh, has, uh, attended there, and our daughter has, um, some speech delay. But, um, she often comes home just talking away, and it's really nice to know that she's getting the attention she needs there, and, uh, it's been a wonderful environment for us to take her to.
Perfect, thank you. So anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak against this case? Is that it, Stuart?
That's it.
Everyone that signed up, okay. Does anybody have, any of the commissioners have any, um, questions for either the City or the, or Vanessa before we entertain a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Preston.
In light of the high praise of the applicant uh, move for, in the matter that case number twenty-one dash four zero zero dash zero one, home business permit at one seven two two nine East Fortieth Street South, uh, be approved, uh, to operate an in-home daycare pursuant to the stipulations cited by staff.
I second.
Heather seconded.
What's that Heather?
Yeah. All right, Stuart, we're ready when you are.
Commissioner Drea?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Congratulations, Vanessa. It sounds like, uh, you're doing an amazing job.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next case is case number twenty-one dash four hundred dash zero two, home business permit at one one five South Cottage Avenue. I am going to, I don't want to mess up your first name. I'll let you tell me the first name. Ms. Ray requests approval of a home business permit for children's, for a children business, childcare business. So, Stuart, if you'll give us a report.
Okay, uh, I, I believe her first name is pronounced Sitlali.
Okay, thank you.
seeks to operate an in-home daycare in her single-family residence at one 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 five South Cottage Avenue. The site is on the east side of South College, just north of Twenty-third Street. She can see it's in the Red Oval there. This is the zoning for the area. The site is in the blue rectangle. It's the last residential lot before the commercial zoning along the Twenty-third Street corridor. The C-three, which is the, the kind of a purplish-red immediately to the east of her property is vacant. It's part of the land to the southeast there that is owned commercial, but it's not being used for anything. This is the, an aerial photograph of the site with the subject property in the Red Oval. Um, as you can see, there's commercial buildings along Twenty-third Street, as you'd expect, and, uh, single-family homes primarily north of this property, even though the property is owned, uh, R-12. And this is a drawing provided by the applicant that shows the layout of the house. Uh, the backyard is in, is at the top of the screen, and then the front door and the front porch is at, at the bottom. It shows the layout of the house and the day, and the various rooms will be used for daycare, such as the one on the lower left, and also the kitchen and other places where that will be used through the house. Uh, this is the, uh, here we're looking west at the front of the applicant's house, taken from essentially the middle of College Street. This is another photograph of the house. It shows kind of the sides of the house, and it shows the driveway in front of the, uh, garage door there, and also the, uh, area in the back. This is, uh, actually one of the few places I've actually been able to take a picture of the backyard. It shows the backyard with the play area will be fenced in, privacy from the street. Okay, here we're on, uh, we're on South Cottage, uh, looking, uh, the applicant's property is off to the left. This is a commercial building that fronts onto, uh, Twenty-third Street. There is a driveway completely around this building. Uh, it's a warehouse of some sort. I'm not really sure what it's used for right now. Here we're looking, uh, uh, north up, uh, Cottage, uh, towards downtown. She can see from this photograph, it's mostly single-family homes, typical residential neighborhood for this part of town. Okay, these next pictures are of, of houses that are across the street from the applicant's property, single-family homes, established neighborhoods. And then, uh, this is the house that's immediately north of, uh, Mrs. Ray's property. Uh, it's another single-family home with a driveway. And staff does recommend approval of this home business with the following conditions. The business shall operate only between the hours of six-thirty AM through five-thirty PM, Monday through Friday. The maximum number and type of non-related children in care is limited to not more than ten, and restricted to the number of children as approved by the state of Missouri and the city. And then in accordance with City Section, City Code Section fourteen dash four oh one dash oh two dash B, not more than fifty percent of the total floor area of the dwelling may be used for the daycare business. And then the last is maintain all required licenses. And, uh, Ms. Ray is, uh, here to, uh, answer any questions? Ms. Ray, are you here?
Perfect. Ms. Ray, do you want to unmute and tell us anything you'd like us to know about your business?
She's muted for some reason.
Miranda, may, you may need to ask her to unmute.
Can you, Ms. Ms. Ray, can you unmute yourself? Okay, she, she says that she is having problems with her audio. Uh, please send, uh, any questions, uh, we may have. Uh, she's not able to make a presentation at this time.
Can she dial in using the phone number?
Um, I, I can ask that. Ms. Ray, can you dial the city using the phone number listed on the, uh, information I sent you? Wave your hand if you can hear me. Ms. Ray, can you hear me?
What do we do if we cannot hear from the applicant? What are our options?
Well, I guess we can, uh, I guess we can go ahead and see if there's anybody here to speak in, or in favor or against the application.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? See Mitch turned his phone. Um, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone who would like to speak against this case? Do we have anyone, Stuart?
Uh, we did not get any calls or any comments from anyone on this application. I knew that the previous application, we may have some people, and we did, but this, we didn't receive any calls or any contact of any sort.
Um, the only other thing I can think to do if she can't call in would be to utilize the chat and ask her questions that way. That's labor-intensive, but we can do it if that helps. Or if it's necessary.
Madam Chair, I have a question, Joe.
Yes.
I, I just had a question for Stuart. On the recommendation, on this one, you, you have, uh, you're requiring not to use more than fifty percent of the total floor area? And in the previous case, you, you didn't state that. Is that because of the size of the home?
Yes, uh, this, this one was smaller than the previous one, and, and, uh, Mrs. Ray indicated that she may want to use some of the garage and some of the other rooms for her business. And I wanted to make sure that she understood that the city code limits her to fifty percent of the floor area. That wasn't an issue on the previous application. Let me see if I can get her on the line here.
Mrs. Ray, if you unders, if you heard that question, can you nod your head if it's, if yes, you do understand that fifty percent of the total floor of the dwelling can be used, only fifty percent can be used for daycare?
I'll do this one, stick it up the phone.
There we go.
Okay, it Yeah, Ms. Ray. It's not there either. She's got her, uh, answering machine on right now. Let me try it again.
If we're unable to read, to ask questions.
Are you, can you, can you hear us? Camera there? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, you can speak loud here. I'm gonna put you up to the, uh, the, uh, thing so you can hear. Can you hear, uh, Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, did you hear the question about the, uh, using not more than fifty percent of the house? Yeah, you, you cannot use more than fifty percent of the floor area of the house for your, for the daycare business.
Okay.
You're okay with that, you understand that?
All right, yes.
Okay, did you have any other thing you wanted to add, or, yeah, any presentation that you want to make, uh, your background or anything like that?
Um, no, I don't have any.
Have you, uh, given, done daycare before at other locations?
Um, no, uh, I need a week, uh, Um, no, um, a little bit, uh, I'm from Mexico, so I was working before over there and kids, but not in Portland, so now I had my family, uh, my child, so I want to get the opportunity to work in some home, because the opportunity for my child.
Okay.
How many children are you planning on having in the daycare?
Um, I had approved for ten.
Okay.
And that's to the state of Missouri, is that right?
Yes, this state is.
And I saw in the notes that you have organized, um, um, activities and meals for the kids.
Yes.
And you passed all the, all the other requirements, are there, commissioners, do you have any questions of Mrs. Ray?
No, I don't have anything to talk.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, and I'm not sure this, if this could be for, for the applicant or for the, well, I, let's, we're, we're on questions for the applicant at this point, right?
You can do both.
Okay, and, and maybe, maybe the city staff would, would better weigh in on this. And looking at the diagram for the organization of the house, I can, you know, I can see the daycare room, baby room, obviously the kitchen and, and dining area would be used, but it appears that the only access to the back is through the garage. And I understand that the city has done inspections and that it's passed, but does, is there any concern about going through a garage area as the only access to the backyard?
Uh, yeah.
Does the city, does the city staff have any, any concerns with that?
Well, uh, fire, uh, reviewed this and, uh, he had this plan and went to her house and he didn't, uh, say any comments as you can see from the, uh, from his, uh, uh, inspection review and the staff report, so I assume that there's no, there's no issues with that.
Okay.
I, I'm guessing because of the window situation, they're probably gonna exit through the windows if they're, if they're, uh, you know, that type of window.
Sure, the, the other question I had was, you know, talking about using fifty percent of the home, uh, in looking at the, at least the first floor here, you know, where we've got the baby room, the daycare room, and then very normal things like kitchen, dining room, family room, garage. But, um, this, as I would expect at the, the first floor of a residence like this, um, you know, if this is an owner-occupied home, um, where is the family living? Where are the family bedrooms? Yeah, are we, do, is there doubles, doubled use of space here or is there, uh, basement living quarters as well? I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time trying to figure out fifty percent of the use of the home without a little bit more information.
Oh, okay, um, so the family thing we had, um, everything downstairs. So, um, upstairs is the family room, um, kitchen, um, bathroom, but everything else is for the, uh, daycare.
Is the majority of your living quarters are in the basement?
Yeah, we had, uh, all except for family in the basement.
Okay, thank you.
They don't go downstairs, they don't go downstairs.
Understood.
Okay, so just, so I heard correctly, so the family lives, basically the living quarters are in the basement and the, the main floor will be primarily used for daycare.
Well, I, I think the kitchen, the dining room are used for, I think there's just bedrooms on the lower level.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
No, I don't have.
Okay, is there anything?
Question for staff, Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is follow-up to Commissioner Michelle's, uh, line of questions about the layout of the house. Does a basement constitute livable space? I- is it? Is it a authorized use of basement for livable space?
Um, it is if it, uh, has, you know, it's primarily being used for bedrooms, so that's a living area, livable area. Provided all the rooms have the property egress windows, which is what I was looking for earlier. Uh, I don't know that's, uh, any, any different than, you know, having a larger home with having two kids bedrooms in the basement, so, uh, yeah, that would qualify as living area, that's right.
And that determination has been made?
Well, like I said, the fire, uh, uh, inspector went out and inspected the whole place, uh, he did, he does his inspection also. Uh, since building inspection doesn't go out and do these, he does their inspections. And you saw that his report that was in the, uh, staff report didn't have any problems with this case as such.
Thank you.
Well, if no one has any more questions, we will close the public portion of this and I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Preston.
In the matter of case number twenty-one dash four-zero-zero dash zero-two, home business permit at one-one-one-five South Cottage Avenue. The applicant requests approval of operate a home, an in-home daycare, a move for approval. With the stipulations as cited by staff.
Yep, thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Did you get that?
Okay, Commissioner Greer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Madam Chairman McLean?
Yes. Congratulations, Mrs. Ray, good luck and thank you for taking care of neighborhood kids. We wish you well. Okay, approval of the minutes, I'll give you all a second to read them, they're very short-ish. And.
Madam Chair, I reviewed the minutes, they appear to be in order.
Well, thank you, if everybody else agrees, thumbs up or say yes.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Yeah, approve this.
Thank you, everyone. All right, does anyone from the city have anything for us that we need to know or?
No, we have a meeting up in, in a couple of weeks, we've got three cases on that plus the capital improvements program, two or three cases.
We're excited.
Now the second, now the meeting in April is, uh, busy. Oh, we don't have anything otherwise.
So bring coffee, I guess that's the cool part about Zoom is you can bring coffee. For these busy ones. All right, does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? All right, well, thank you everybody. Have a great week. I'm trying to remember what month we're in, March, have a great couple of weeks till I see you again.